I'd like to invite Bishop Marshall to the podium to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you so choose.
Father God, we come to you today first just to be thankful for how you kept this all day long. Father God, how you had your arms around us, Father God, and let no harm. Again, you come near, Father God, how you protected us all the way, Father God. We give you glory and praise, Father God. We come now, Father God, and asking that you touch this meeting, Father God, that you would get the glory out of it, Father God, that everything that was be said and done, Father God, it's already been approved by you, Father God. Because before we made any decision, we seek you for an answer, Father God. So we just want to thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the liberty, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, we will now move on to agenda items, three additions and deletions. Alden Thompson. Um, and stuff I can remove from session, uh, attorney's talk, fine information, uh, speed, uh, so we're free. All right, so we are taking off nine A. We love the Michael, we just don't have to. And I would absolutely like to take a point of privilege and recognize our state representative, Representative Margaret Lucas, who has graced us with his presence and his beautiful wisdom. Lucas, thank you guys so much for being here tonight. All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Alden Lemon Cooper.
Um, I'm going to go through the agenda with the, um, just corrections.
Uh, Mayor Proton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the consent is, or the motion's unanimous, and we will go on to approval of our consent items, draft minutes, uh, June twelve, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and the draft minutes of the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three work session meeting. Alden Thompson.
So who?
Uh, Alden Lackman.
I'll start with that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. We will now move on to public comments. I would like to, uh, invite Ms. Johnson to the podium. Just remember that you are authorized only three minutes, um, and we will just let you know when your time is getting short.
Yes.
Hey, welcome back. We haven't seen you in a little while. You heard this great deal.
Good evening, Spring Lake citizens, uh, mayor and elected official. I have a question about the water bill. I understand that you said that we do get it from different sources, and they went up on Friday, it was passed on to the consumer. Did y'all make sure they're giving us good prices on it?
Yeah, we can respond.
Okay, no, I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just asking a question. And also, um, I know a lot of them go to different kind of conferences. Are there any other, um, setups like this in Spring Lake that have the same, uh, concern that we have that we're getting water? Could y'all look at another example, maybe for set, see what they did instead of just saying, hey, we get it from three sources, y'all just passing on to us? Some kind where y'all can look into that a little bit and make sure that. Cause my water bill was extremely high. I went through all protocol, and what I was supposed to do, reached out to the water department, they read the meter, no leaks. So the next thing is just talk to the elected official. So I just want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we will, um. Okay, uh, we will now move on to agenda item seven A, Pink Diamonds, the five K Cancer Walkland and Community Festival. Ms. Sheila Wilson, please march to the podium.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. I am Sheila Wilson again, on behalf of Pink Diamonds, I'm the community liaison. And I'm going, the things we're going to talk about tonight are the history, the cancer, cancer walk and community festival, and community services, what you thought about. The Pink Diamonds is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization that was founded by Diamond Bryant. She's also a two-time cancer survivor, and her mission overall is to help eliminate some of the stress during patient, uh, journey that allows them to focus on what's important and focus on healing and not additional concerns that cancer pre- pre- gets. Um, our, the annual community festival and cancer walk, the purpose is to support cancer patients and, uh, during every stage of the cancer diagnosis. It is our goal to ensure that cancer patients are supported and aware of available resources. The Survivor Community Festival is an opportunity for, to remember a special person that has lost their battle of cancer, to celebrate survivors, survivors, and to, um, those currently dealing with, um, healing and raising awareness and promoting cancer prevention. Um, during the, the five K and the community festival, our goal is to have some vendors. Of course, non-alcoholic beverages are, are allowed. There will be awareness and health information, um, games, entertainment and music, and social, um, clubs that are in the community. They'll volunteer their services, uh, to the walk and to the, not only to the walk, but to the community festival. Um, there will be a mammogram van and, uh, blood pressure screening. And so the mammogram van will be able to screen, do mammograms on site for, um, for patients. And they, they can do their insurance, or, uh, one of the goals of Pink Diamonds is to pay for people to get screened if they don't have any insurance. And that's also the goal of some of the sponsors. We ask to help with that cost if they don't. Uh, and, uh, what the patients can do, and if you guys are able to help us, and that's to get them signed up for the, the mammogram van, and, uh, they have to do that cryo too. Um, the patient, cancer patient assistance, what Pink Diamonds has been able to do, uh, she was established to, for the survivors assistance program, to financially assist those who have, um, been diagnosed with cancer. Pink Diamonds has continuously provided assistance to cancer patients and/or their family and caregivers since two thousand and sixteen when it was founded. Um, and there's the organization's, uh, website if you want to go check it out. And it's also, if you guys know of anybody who's battling cancer right now, there's an, uh, application that they can go on and sign up for assistance. Uh, she also presents the Life Goes On Scholarship, and that's, uh, funding is generated from the five K and from other activities that she's involved in that prevents and produces an annual scholarship for not only cancer survivors, but their, um, dependents as well. And the Cancer Survival Program has created, was created to assist cancer survivors and/or their dependents who plan on furthering their education. These are some of the community service activities. She just, she doesn't just do the five K or the community festival. There are other activities that she's involved with as well. That's the contact information. We definitely appreciate your support for everything you have helped us with along this journey. And that's the board of directors and the members of Pink Diamonds organization. Guys have any questions?
I do, yes. Uh, you asked for help. Can you be more specific about that?
For what we would need in addition to, we appreciate you allowing us to host the, the walk in town, but we would need, um, the police to escort us so that we, just to make sure that the runners are, walkers are safe.
So you're asking for a sponsorship?
Sponsorship, absolutely.
For?
The police services and fires, fire services as well.
Police, fire, streets?
Yes, and the fire, with fire, that would be emergency assistance as well.
And you anticipate, um, how many people joining?
We anticipate, well, we're hoping for about four hundred, but for the most part, they've had about one to two hundred, um, participants.
Alden Lemon Cooper.
Thank you. Uh, so one of my questions is, say, is there really, uh, a charge to attend? Is that a registered or?
Registered for the run, yes, ma'am. And then the, their vendors will have a vendor fee and just normal typical sponsorship we ask for in the community.
All right, thank you. So, um, uh, go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Just to get this clear, you are charging a fee, but all that's going to go back to help people that cannot afford. That's the understanding, we want to understand that is, is all this is going back to the community to get tested and all these things, is that correct?
Yes, sir. No one, um, in Pink Diamonds benefits financially from any of it. We, we are five oh one C three, but we don't get paid at all. Our services are volunteer.
Are there any questions from the board? Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For that presentation, we will, uh, discuss this again for approving the event and new business. We will now move on to, um, our appearances sustainability committee. Yard of the Month. Alden Lemon.
I'll take it, Mayor. So, uh, as you know, Yard of the Month is an award that is given out to residents and soon to be business owners who upkeep and maintain their property in a way that unifies the town appearance. So, fourth of July, twenty twenty-three, we're gonna, I threw together a little presentation. Carly helped me with the Edwards on Goodyear Drive. This is their property. Just zooming on through there. Let's admire. All right, uh, we'll just keep going. Five. All right, here we go, that's the Edwards.
Oh, okay.
Next. Most, Mr. Blueenfield, he's on Chris Avenue, so that represents the Lake Tree subdivision. Mr. Willie McKnight, that's Deerfields winner. And then Deborah Nguyen, and he's in, uh, Sixth Street back part of Sprint, uh, by, uh, over there by, um, the school, I'm sorry. All right, let's give our winners a shout. And I don't believe any of them are here today. When I spoke to them, they. Is, is that her, the little flower sprayer? Would the board like to join in a picture?
Absolutely.
Is she getting up?
I feared this would be more meaningful if the board took a picture with you. Ms. Pedrick, would you like to come on? Ms. Sutherland is the representative of the appearance committee. How are you doing?
There you go, stay right here. If you'd like to come up here, so we can take a picture right here. Congratulations.
Coming this at all.
Squeeze that.
Come on back in here, we got, there's something, can we get the board together? You can't get them. There we go.
Give him a certificate, show.
Jay, Jay, you want to take another one, one short, like this? Thank you. Congratulations.
It's worth noting, Ms. Edwards was a former member of the appearance committee. Long time coming, this one. Thank you, Mayor. It's a shame you had to get off, though, please.
Awesome. So we will now move on to our new business, um, agenda item eight A discussion regarding the naming of Woodland West Park. Alden Lemon Cooper.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so just a little history, back in twenty twenty, um, there was a discussion to name, uh, Woodland West Park after lifelong resident Rex Perry, uh, who did so much for, um, our community and our children, our students. He also went on to work at FTCC, and he's a much loved, um, was a much loved resident of Spring Lake. And so we voted to name the Woodland West Park after him. It was unanimous, and I would just like for us to go ahead and complete that process and have that taken care of. Uh, it's my understanding that in S and E, we also had a vote to, um, uh, we had, there was, um, we had several discussions about naming either the bridge or, um, the police annex after, uh, Mr. Billy Manning, who was, um, a police chief and a mayor here. Uh, so I'd also like to bring that forward and let us, and just go through with that process as well.
Didn't you like have anything to add to that? So, um, what I just had pass out was a timeline, if you want to read that. Okay, there's a timeline for Mr. Manning, um, and the discussion as well as for Mr. Perry.
Okay, so that was for. Yeah, that was for, um, I don't know.
Want to look for that? Alden Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I remember these meetings, and I remember that, you know, it was clear the, um, direction that the board had given. And, uh, you know, it's overdue. I think we should have already honored this, but I understand the reason, I guess, was because of COVID that it wasn't followed through. Uh, so I'm certainly in favor of proceeding as the, uh, our board had, um, moved. Now, um, I do recall that there was some discussion, though, regarding the bridge, of following proper protocol, that there wasn't, you couldn't just name it. Anybody have anything on that?
So, um, there, there is, um, um, several DOT requirements, uh, in order to name a bridge after someone. Um, those, all of those were presented to the board at the time, at that time, and those requirements were not met. And that is why I said, let's name the police annex after, uh, Mr. Manning. And to, and any future, um, structures would also be named after him. So that, you know, if it was torn down, it would still name the, the future structure after him. So, and, um, the, um, Woodland West Park, um, that was also, like I said, that was a, um, um, we re-put it up for a moment, and, um, and, um, we take it with the policy, and then we, uh, passed it as, uh, a future name. Um, trying to find the words, I'm so sorry. Okay, uh, June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen was when we started naming the police annex after former police street, um, Mayor Bill, and Mayor Billy Manning. Um, there was a public here, August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, um, for that naming. And there was also, uh, future police facilities bear's name. It was a four to one vote. And, um, February tenth, the naming of police annexation building, um, it approved it by a lowest vote of three to. So, um. Okay, so that was the history on the police annex. And the rest of the history for Mr. Perry is in the package. I'd also like to recognize anyone who's here in favor of naming, um, that part after Mr. Perry. If you all please stand. And, and I see his two sisters, Janet and Rita, Rita Harris and Janet Perry. Thank you all so much for coming. Um, and.
May I take a point of privilege? Ms. Perry, if you had anything you wanted to share, you can approach the podium. If not, it's perfectly fine, either for you or. I'm sorry, Ms. Harris or. Right, you're newly married, but sorry about that. When was going to say anything, you know? As you all know, Rex loves Spring Lake, and, um, Spring Lake Recreation and everything he did. But my son grew up in the recreation department, so he's just an honor that you guys are recognizing, and we really appreciate it. Everybody, it's a sight, and he's just going to be here today. Thank you so much.
So, Ms. Rager, could we, could we work with the family, get a day to do the dedication?
I will first give the, the plaque, normally.
So, uh, hopefully here soon, we will now see, uh, Mr. Perry's recognized in the glory that it should be. So we appreciate him and everything he contributed to this community. And we thank you for coming out and recognition of him.
I can, but I just got to like, I just.
So, uh, unfortunately, um, our police chief is unable to be here. He had a family emergency, um, that happened this afternoon. So we are going to go ahead and move forward, uh, with agenda item eight B, and that will be our special events permit for Pink Diamond. We need a motion to approve, uh, we will pass this off to you. Mr. Rager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, basically, this is just, it's, it's in the package we have. That covers everything. Uh, some of the, some of the questions we had was if, you know, can we help if they're raising money, things like that? But I think we cleared all that out today. Um, so basically, it just comes down to you guys. Police and fires do with helping them out, um, in the streets, wonderful things. Um, but I want us really to bring more things like this to Spring Lake. Um, we, we are a growing town, and I think we need to bring more people to town. I think we really need to kick ourselves off because we're, we're, we're an awesome town. We need to keep rolling. So, uh, it's, it's in y'all's hands to approve or deny this.
And I also want to commend the special events committee. This was the first, um, event that the special events committee actually had to review. Uh, they walked Ms. Miss Diamond through this process. They, uh, streets worked with her and police and fire worked with her very, very closely to make sure the route was etched out. Uh, they made some adjustments, but everything is set. Uh, and I, I definitely can't wait to see, uh, this event happen. It's good for us to, you know, do a little exercise, so I'm here for it. I will now entertain a motion to approve. Mayor Proton.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Pink Diamonds, five K Cancer Walk on Green.
Um, Alden Thompson.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Alden Lackman.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Ward, just to be clear, the route that's, that's been identified, it's, it's been cleared. Uh, is the road's going to be closed down? Or is the road's going to be open during that timeframe? And have the residents of those, those areas been notified if there's going to be any shutdowns?
It will not be shut down, um, but we will have the police in the area, in the area. Uh, fire will be there just to make sure. It's, we do use the back roads through the, and it's a Saturday morning, I believe. Isn't that right, Saturday morning? Yeah, so it shouldn't be really super busy. But we're going to give our eye out, and we'll, we'll advise people. They, they should know what's going on, uh, as we go along, but we won't have, we shouldn't have any problems. We've done, we've done, uh, certain, uh, different events like this. There wasn't any, no problems at all. So this, uh, I think it's been on.
And I do want to make it clear that we are not just approving the event. We are approving the event with sponsorship. That means we would be, um, paying for police presence, fire presence, streets presence, um, and that would be our sponsorship to this event. Uh, and again, making sure that we are aware that there's no profit going to this organization, all of the money. Because if, if this was a for-profit event, the town is not allowed to sponsor. Uh, but because the money that they are, uh, taking in is going into, back into the scholarship and into paying for mammograms, correct?
Yes.
Then, uh, no one's profiting from this event. So I just want to make sure that's above the limit. Mayor Proton?
And I just want to also say that, um, the, the money also goes back into, into the community to help people that may. The money also goes back into the community to help people that may need help with bills. And also, um, they sponsor the schools as well. So this money goes to help the community because we all know someone that might have had cancer, and we know that it's not an easy bout, and they may have income loss, and it also goes toward that, and paying for mammograms for people that cannot afford to pay for mammograms. So, and I just wanted to say that I'm helping with this event, and it's very important, especially to me, so, um, it has my stamp and seal, seal approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is now unanimous. We look forward to, uh, this event. So congratulations for being our first specially then approved event. We like to do so many great things. I am so, so, so proud of this town. All right, and we will now move on to HC, our, uh, Community Appearances Sustainability Committee bylaws. Alden Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. So bringing this to the board, um, in May of twenty twenty-two, the appearance committee had their elections for chair and vice chair. And, uh, the year came and gone, and it was time for election staff again. The current bylaws state that they are to be done annually. And, um, and, but the, uh, overall member of the board, the members of the board, rather, all determined to have a specific date, a specific time for elections to clear up any future issues. So the proposal is that January, uh, each year is going to be the time for the committee to have their specific elections. So that's the only addition or change, rather, to the bylaws. So, that being said, anybody with questions? Otherwise, I make a motion to approve the bylaw changes.
I, I would like to add to that. I, I challenge everyone, um, not me, but you, because you're not on board, uh, to look at your bylaws as well, and just make sure there's no ambiguous language like annually, and we can do something more specific. That way, we could set a more concrete timeline and uniformity as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I need a second. Is there a second? Mayor Proton?
I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? The motion is unanimous, and the bylaws can be updated. Awesome. Time is, this is fast. All right, we'll now move on, uh, to agenda item eight B, which are our mayor updates. Um, and I, I have a few, um, updates. First off, I want to wish our fellow board member, Adrian Thompson, a very happy birthday. Her birthday was yesterday. So the biggest, well, the biggest, welcome back. We had a nice long break. It was. We had a nice long break, it was really weird to have a Monday off. It was the first Monday of in our almost two-year timeframe that we had, uh, we were able to just take a breather, so that was nice. A lot of it's weird, but it was nice. Uh, I do want to make sure that you guys understand that it is campaign season, we've had a lot of, um, voter laws change. Voter IDs are now required, you can get one from the DMV, um, and from the Board of Elections. You can also, um, if you are over the age of sixty-five, you are authorized to use an expired ID. But please make sure that you have your voter ID, um, ready to vote. If you don't have an ID, you can still cast provisional ballot, uh, but you'll have to make sure that you show your ID in order for that ballot to be cast. Also, we had several meetings, um, during this, this long break, had a nice discussion with FanPo about some grant funding that the town could possibly apply for, for infrastructure, um, and so we're really looking forward to looking into that. Uh, I met with Parks and Rec, we got some updates from Parks and Rec and I know the community is really interested in what's happening, so it's kind of, uh, almost what we, we came into with, with the town of Spring Lake. It, you didn't know how deep the rabbit hole was until you got in and so we had a lot of, you know, underlying issues with our rec center. Uh, Cumberland County has, uh, replaced nine of our eleven HVAC systems over there. They have replaced our roof, um, they are training the staff that are over there, so they're actually floating to other rec centers to actually get training and bring that back to us. They are in an observation mode right now, so they wanna monitor, uh, the activity at Parks and Rec so they can know how to better adjust, uh, for our community. So, we're looking to see some new updates here, uh, by next summer, we'll see some, some real activity happening. Um, I found out that that park equipment is really, really, really expensive. Um, and due to the fact that the town didn't have at the time very much to contribute, um, to financially to the repairs of the park, it's gonna take a bit longer for the county to get the funding to repair our parks, but they are on top of it. Um, and so we should see some, some updates, they may be minor and they may be internal, uh, but, but they are absolutely updating our parks and rec system, um, currently. Also, I wanna remind you that lunch with the mayor is, I always tear up the date, the twenty-fourth.
Six.
Thank you Bernard, what is it?
Six, this is Wednesday.
Uh, but on that same day, um, I, I've let you guys know before, I am a, on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Mayor's Association and we have been extended the opportunity to meet with the Modovan Parliament, um, in Raleigh on that day as well. So, we get a chance to, um, understand how international government works, exchange ideas and best practices and we can bring those back to our community, so I'm really, really excited about that, um, and bringing that forward. I also want to again commend our board, our staff, um, for all of the hard work that they have been putting in throughout this time. There have been so many, many major updates during our stick, um, on the day and, and I just wanna make sure, um, that I, I pat you guys on the back and, you know, give you your flowers. Um, but thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing. I also want to identify a few projects that are in the works, um, and we will be digging into this a bit deeper here very soon, but I just wanna put it out there to let you guys know what projects are happening. So, we are, um, looking into Lily and Black and how that building can best serve our community. I've already reached out to the Cumberland County Board of Education, um, and the superintendent, expressing interest, um, and then gifting or granting this piece of property back to the town. That is one of our old, it is our oldest standing building in the community and what we do not want to happen is to see that building go to waste. Um, so, look forward to a few stakeholders meeting here in the future so that the community can come in and tell us your ideas or vision for that building, um, and we will pursue that opportunity to preserve that building for us. A few updates on the Hillside Cemetery, uh, we have, uh, been working with the Greater, or excuse me, the Sandcoast Family Heritage Association. They've been providing resources on how we can get that cemetery listed on the historical cemetery registry. That way, we can preserve it and, and prevent it from being, um, closed down. So, if, if we can't save it, then they're going to shut off that cemetery and no one will have access to their relatives that are there and, and the historical connection to that land until we're in the process of seeing what we can do to preserve, um, that cemetery. One of the biggest things that, um, let me tell you one more, uh, the Musburger Park project. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Musburger Park, but there is a huge piece of thirty, I think it's thirty-four acres of land, uh, that was gifted to the town, um, for walking trails. The little river is back there with some beautiful, um, scenic overlooks that we want to, to repair. I know the process was started pre-COVID, however, with the community and the nation being on lockdown, um, tho- those paths that were cleared are now overgrown. Um, and so we really want to, we've asked the state to, to help us with this, um, possibly giving us, granting us money, uh, so that we can clear out these walking trails and give Spring Lake another beautiful addition, uh, for our citizens to enjoy. So, the biggest thing that's on the hook right now, this is something I know that's been really hot in Spring Lake for the past at least fifteen years, which is natural gas. Um, I have had several meetings with PMOP, uh, with Fort Bragg and we are looking to meet with our state delegation as well as our federal delegation to move forward with the process of bringing natural gas to Spring Lake. What this does is this allows us to bring in the restaurants, the bigger restaurants that we want somewhere to, you know, sit down and relax, some sort of entertainment features, but this can also extend into the possibility of us bringing in a, a school or a medical complex, something that's gonna serve our community, because as of right now, we only have a pain clinic, an urgent care clinic, and a pediatric clinic, we need something, uh, for our residents to have immediate emergency a- or access to medical facilities. So, that is a huge thing and I'm going to need all of the community's support, because this is not just for business owners, it's also for residential owners. This cuts propane bills in half. Um, and so this is a huge benefit for our community if we can get the buy-in from you all and from our business owners. So, please spread the word, because the more you guys push us, we have, it gives us more leverage to, you know, really push back and get this for our community, um, that we, we've been, again, this has been, um, talked about for years and we are finally at the table, um, having real discussions and real planning periods to bring natural gas. So, I am stoked about this and there'll be more to come, we'll be having a stakeholders meeting about that as well to get community engagement and figure out how you want to move with this, if you are interested, and I'm, I'm sure you are. Um, so, those are my updates for today. I will now move on to our board members, uh, Mayor protest.
Okay, since we have approval, I do wanna have, uh, say, say the date, September thirtieth. Pink Diamond five K cancer, uh, Walk and Run Community Festival, September thirtieth. There will be more information to follow and I do wanna invite the community out to Anderson Peak Christian Center, um, on July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, we will have vacation Bible school from, um, six-thirty, I think from six-thirty to eight-thirty. And then on August fifth, we are having a sneaker ball. So, we definitely wanna invite the youth to come, there's gonna be lots of, uh, music and fun, something for the young youth to do. And we'll also be having a school give back for, um, for, for, um, the young people that attend. We just wanna have something fun, so I invite you out to Anderson Peak Christian Center.
Alden Fossos.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we have town cleanup scheduled for September sixteenth, uh, that's our fall cleanup and it'll be organized with more details to come here at the rec center as we usually organize. Uh, and then I also wanted to point out that we, the town does have a new code enforcement company that is doing that for us. So, uh, again, if you, uh, see things that need to be addressed in our community as we continue to make Spring Lake look clearer and better, uh, to reach out to our inspections department, you'll get those, uh, recorded and sent over to our code enforcement. Thank you, Mayor.
And just to piggyback off that, just to send a picture, uh, if you see something, send a picture, email a picture to, um, town manager, or excuse me, manager at townofspringlake.com. Um, I, I, I wanna highlight, uh, Ms. Johnson, she is very, very effective when she, she will ride through her neighborhood and say, hey, guys, check this out and she'll send a picture to us and, and Crystal will tell you. We try to get to it as quickly as we can, um, prioritizing it, um, as best as possible. So, just send a quick picture, you see something, a leak, a tree limb, trash, man- manager at townofspringlake.com, just take a picture and send it. Alden Lachman.
The only thing I have is, uh, cops and conversations, community meeting will be here Thursday, um, the twenty-seventh at six, um, PM. And come for, it's just conversation, it's no agendas, you know, no speeches, just, you know, just for the community, that's all.
Alden Lachman.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, um, last cleanup that we did, we cleaned up two illegal dump sites, we, we collected over thirty bags of trash. We got shorted on the weight, it was, it was two hundred and sixty pounds, but there were a lot of yard debris that was included in there from one of the illegal dump sites. And so, I'd like to take the opportunity that Alden woman Thompson and Charles sitting over there at the very far left. Yes, Charles. I wanna thank you for, for coming out, it was, it was a hot day, but, but we collected all that trash and, and cleaned up the town. We worked on Sixth and Lake, Odell, Rose, Weaver Streets, all throughout the town, cleaning that up, so, um, that was good. Next cleanup is August fifth at eight AM, we'll meet at Southlands Plaza, uh, we'll go back out there and assist the town in tackling the, the blight that's out there and make freeway look, look cleaner. And tomorrow night, we have the Military Veterans Affairs Committee meeting at six-thirty right here in this building. Uh, it is open to the general public, if you would like to come out and, and, and see what's going on in our Military Veterans Affairs and, and things that we've got going on in the town, please come out and, and join us.
And I definitely like to, to piggyback on that as well, um, I, the community is noticing. The letters and the notes and the messages that we are getting now are drastically different from what we were receiving when we first took office. Uh, we are now getting praises and pats on the back with community members, just sending us quick messages to say, thank you for cleaning up. Thank you, my street looks better, thank you for cutting the grass. Um, and it's very evident, our streets, they are on it. You can really, now coming in, uh, from, from Fort Bragg, you can see where Spring Lake starts because our, they are out there and they are on it. Your tax dollars brought our community new mowers and they are using them. Uh, it, it is really nice and, and it, it looks like they're having fun out there, because those are really nice mowers. Um, and so they are really, really, uh, putting our tax dollars to work. Um, so I just wanted to commend you for taking your own personal time to do this. Uh, and you were doing this before you were on board and you continue to do it now and that's huge, so, thank you. And thank you all for participating. Alden Woman Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, I had a, I've had a busy, um, summer and will continue. I just, um, got back from Tacoma, Washington, where I attended the National League of Cities Summer Leadership, um, meeting. It was a more intimate affair for National, um, League of Cities, there was an invitation only, and it was those of us who are on constituency groups or, uh, in leadership roles or federal advocacy groups. And one of the things we did was, um, we had almost an all-day, um, uh, presentation about municipal bond markets and racial equity. Uh, something I didn't know was that three-fourths of infrastructure projects are funded through bonds. And, um, it's important that you know how to, um, request your funding, that you request enough funding. You have, you have to have enough intimate knowledge about construction to be, you know, so that you don't ha- um, request, you don't request enough. Like there was a, oh, yeah, lady there who said it took them ten years to build the fire station that they funded through their bonds because they didn't ask for enough money and it was ARPA that got them to the finish line. So, we got really, uh, really great instruction and information about, um, bonds. Uh, we also did a State of the Cities. Bonds are like you, um, they're like loans to do your big projects, uh, like, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the rec center was a bond. Uh, sometimes when you wanna build, say you need to build a school, you get a bond, so they're for bigger projects, not for your small projects. And you're paid and they're guaranteed, uh, the organization, uh, that spoke to us, um, I think it's called Build America Mutual and they guaranteed over a hundred billion dollars in bonds, uh, in the last, uh, I think, ten years. So, um, that was one of our, uh, sessions and we also had the State of the Cities. And, uh, they, you know, they interviewed mayors from across the whole nation and one of the things they talked about was everybody's concerned about infrastructure. And infrastructure, you know, it was like when you see those sinkholes, that's the growth of that infrastructure, the bridges, infrastructure, your, um, your, um, sidewalks, your, um, uh, the pipes to go underground, uh, when your, uh, where your water goes, all of that's infrastructure. So, they, um, that was one of the biggest concerns, broadband, um, that was another one. So, we had, uh, we also had an opportunity to, um, do a special session on trauma as an elected official. Cause, you know, if, if we've all just gotten through COVID, there's no one who didn't have any type of trauma do that. So, we had a really great session on that, learning how to deal with trauma as an elected official and just in life, for generals. So, again, uh, I know three hundred something people doesn't seem into it, but normally their conferences are about a thousand or four to five thousand. And, um, I went to that, it was at no cost to the town, I've said that more than once. The town did not pay any money for my ticket, for my registration, for my hotel or for my meal. So, uh, it would be an invitation, it was an invitation. Uh, I have next, I have no one like elected municipal officials, conference, the mayor and I are going to that this weekend coming up. And, uh, that will be in Rock and Mound and, uh, there, I, we will also be having a session on water and infrastructure and infrastructure funding for that, so, uh, and also a session on public safety. So, we have to bring those resources back to the community as well. And, um, uh, lastly, I'm going to Women, National League of Cities Women in Municipal Government. I am the, uh, immediate past president of the North Carolina Women in Municipal Government and my, uh, registration has been paid for by the organization, the North Carolina Organization and my hotel is being paid for by that, but, uh, I've been part of the planning, it's delivered from across the whole United States coming together in Charlotte. Um, and so we will, um, there's actually gonna be a panel about HBCUs and our former mayor, Chris Ray, has been invited to speak at that panel, who I don't know if all of you know, he's been named the Chancellor of Barbara Socia College in Concord, which is another HBCU. So, I've been a little risky and, um, but I've lost my voice, it's cold up there in Tacoma, the plane's a cold. But, um, I, you know, I'm continuing to work and try to bring resources. Uh, I didn't mention the infrastructure group camp that we hopefully will be signing up for. NLC is working really hard to get small cities under twenty thousand funding, uh, for infrastructure and they are going to, they will do a boot camp camp and they will walk us through with our, with our staff, the mayor and the manager, they'll walk us through the process of getting grant funds for infrastructure for the city. And that's part of being a member of the organization, so, uh, just that alone pays for, um, the membership fee.
And I can't stress enough the importance of these conferences. Not only are we learning, but this is where we go find our resources. Our newly, uh, hired contracted, um, code enforcement came from, um, our, our, what's it, what's it, city, city vision. So, this is where we go when we actually have access to hundreds and hundreds of vendors that are specific for municipalities and we can handpick what we want, what we need, um, from all types of resources. So, these conferences aren't just training us how to be better elected officials, it's where we go to get our resources so that we can continue to progress in our community. Mayor, Andrew.
I don't have a whole lot, just wanna tell the employees, thank you, you guys are still out there humping it every day. It's, it's hot and need let off, it's very good. Uh, a little shout out to PD, I've seen more people. It's hot, and you need to let off, it's very good. A little shout out to PD, I've seen more people pulled over here in the last little bit. You guys are slowing some people down in this town, so I do appreciate that. You know, you guys, everybody's doing a great job, so just, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's huge, because that's absolutely right. To see the reports and see how many we were stopping before, to how many we're stopping now. I mean, people used to say, joke, I speed through Spring Lake, I bet they won't now, I bet they won't now. So that's new equipment, more staff, we've hired several more police officers, there are another one that's hopefully coming aboard. So when I saw you, Spring Lake is rapidly progressing in the right direction, so I can't, I'm so proud, I'm just so proud. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I'd also like to thank PD on behalf of the county bar, for making work of the lawyers. You guys. I've got them.
You guys are funny. Awesome, so we will now move on to Agenda Item Nine, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 131811. A six personnel. Aldo Woman Cooper, still moved. Alden Lackman?
Second half.
All in, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion is unanimous. Thank you all so much for coming out. We appreciate each and every one of you.
We are coming. The way you have to.
All right, I'm not interested in motion to come out of closed session, therefore ten.
I make motion to go out of closed session.
Third second? What? Only possible.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Give me votes. Okay, see that list. I'm not saying, motion to adjourn meeting. Therefore ten.
I make a motion to again.
Autumn Cooper. Second. Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.